Welcome, everybody. Sorry, we're running a few minutes behind. If we can have a roll call, please.
Trustee Marcus?
Here.
Trustee Weekly is absent. Trustee McAvoy as a guest.
So trustee Weekly and trustee McAvoy are both attending as a guest. They won't be participating in the voting.
Vice President Wells?
Here.
President Lawson?
Here. Forgive me, I feel rusty after missing one meeting here. Report out on closed session from March 20th, 2024. No action was taken. Report out on closed session from April 3rd. No action was taken. So welcome, everybody. Si necesita traducción en español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno. El signo de número para la contraseña. Si si asiste a la reunión en persona y necesita interpretación al español, solicite, solicite un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card online or at the entrance. And you can hand it to Evelyn. Okay, so with that, we are on changes to the agenda. We need to pull item 11.2 due to a family emergency. That will come back to us at a later meeting. Any other changes?
Which, which, with measure U, are they coming in? Someone coming in? I thought they were two.
Okay, so we may pull another item once. We might have to table it, but we'll wait on that one, I guess. It's just the three of us, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Where are we? Thank you, everyone. Oral communication. We have two speakers cards. First, oh, we have three. So speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board. And if Spanish translation is needed, there'll be three minutes for speaking and three minutes for translation. Our first speaker is Ariana Balte. Yes, you can, if you can just press the button on the right that turns the microphone on. There you go. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ariana Balte. I'm a teacher at North Star. I've been teaching there more than 20 years. I want to talk about a move for North Star. I don't want to reflect back on North Star forward. That might be construed my movement as North Star backward, which I would not want. But I do want to ask that we consider moving North Star to the old 3150 Granger, old Adelante campus. I think that would solve a number of problems. And I would like to go over some of the things that I think it would do. First of all, there's been some changes since the larger problems that we discussed in past campaigns. In, first of all, there was about 120 new students added to MIT, and next year, another 60 more are coming. This is going to make our yard pretty untenable. Right now already, we're experiencing a crunch. Not that we have the same schedules. Our schedules are staggered. But when we're at PE and MIT is at lunch or changing classes, et cetera, we're finding that the students are overwhelming all of our areas of school. And in addition, when I do something like a Shakespeare project out on the yard, or there's carpentry, or students are doing other activities, like we did a buddy share with another class at the lunch tables. There are, there's a mixing going on of MIT students and our students. So it's really overcrowded. North Star has a need for more space in general as well. We're bursting at the seams. We have one science lab that we've taken all the science equipment out of that we're using for everything from cooking classes to dance classes to PE overflow to everything. And I have my cooking class on one side of the room. At the same time, we're cleaning the floor for the dance people to come in, and I'm bargaining for 15 minutes with the art teacher. So it's really, it's, our space is scarce. Ranny Day lunches, teachers are having to leave their classrooms and lose their prep time so they can put PE in their classrooms during lunch. And there's, there's a lot of a space of crunch. I believe that going to the Adelante campus at Granger Street would allow us to have a few more students. I think that Adelante, that Adelante holds 640 and 520 is what we're at at North Star. That additional amount would also allow us to fix another problem, which is that we have four core subjects and three groups of students at each grade level. So if we were allowed to have 640 students, we could solve the problem that we have. For example, I'm teaching English and social studies, eighth grade twice, nicely coordinated, nicely balanced. And my colleague, David Flint, is teaching one eighth grade science, I'm sorry, one eighth grade social studies, one seventh grade social studies, one eighth grade language arts, and one seventh grade language arts. That's four preps. It's crazy. Over the years, 20 years I've been there, I've had sixth grade English and eighth grade English. Next year, I'm teaching eighth grade English and one seventh grade English, which I've never taught before. It's just a mess. So that would, that problem could be solved. Also, I genuinely feel that would be an advantage. We're trying to attract Spanish speakers and Bayside students. And I think it would honestly be an improvement for those students to be at Adelante for a number of reasons. One is that the MIT students flowing into our campus are interacting with all of our kids. But especially, I believe that they're putting peer pressure on our Spanish-speaking students at North Star. I think those students feel that it's not cool to read books, not cool to excel at their academics. And what I, I think that if you look at North Star kids, we test in and we take in, we are Asperger's central. We test in our kids because they're geeky and they want to really be able to be, have, be cool to share books. They, my daughter came to North Star and she found that it was, it was a thing that the kids traded books all the time. They, they want to be doing their Shakespeare and feel safe to do that. And I think the parents.
Sorry, your three minutes is up, so if you could wrap it up.
Okay, so please consider reassigning North Star Academy to Adelante's old campus at 3150 Granger for more space for a dedicated campus that won't be disrupted by the constantly increasing presence of MIT students who may pressure some of our students to focus on distractions rather than the joy that they would otherwise take in their academics and help us solve some of the problems that we're experiencing at North Star.
Thank you, thank you. And I forgot to mention earlier, but because this is oral communication, we can't have a discussion, but we can hear your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Edison Chang.
Buenas noches. My name is Edison Chang, and I'm here representing my daughter, trying to explain a little bit about what she currently is doing and what she comes bringing from primary school. The special education that she is receiving. From the beginning, we were very happy that she was going through different therapies, she speaks, and all the other therapies. But with time, she hasn't progressed, she hasn't been able to improve her qualifications, the classes. Currently, she is refusing to go because of the school that she is in and where she is in primary school. She is experiencing very emotional situations. She doesn't feel happy to be in school. Well, there are many different cases of special children, which affects her group. It's a small group, but it affects her a lot. The difference in reactions that they have in every case of every special child. I respect and I know that every parent is taking care of their children, the care that they want within the classroom where my daughter is. And there are children who have a more, we can say, stronger, or they scream, play, and do things that affect her emotionally. We have asked, we have had several meetings with IP that help us, see, this, my daughter. We suspect that in some way, she suddenly doesn't, a special education child needs more help. We've asked different help. The one-on-one, they didn't accept us. We've said that, well, we have improved her education. They've talked about that she needs different therapies, and she's passed through several of them, but none have worked. They say that she is improving, her qualifications, that she has evolved more and has grown. But in her reports, the school, they are all very low. And in place of improving her qualifications, she has reduced her qualifications. And the reason may be because she has had many absences, but primarily because she doesn't receive, I think, the correct help. And what we have asked the last two meetings, we have asked, most importantly, I have asked, as a father of her, and I want to emphasize that she is a 13-year-old girl. And she is in a difficult age, but we suspect that she has a lot of absences too. And I know that's one of the reasons why she is very low, but we're requesting the right support, the right help. What we've done twice, we requested twice as a parent, was to make this very clear, that she's a 13-year-old girl. And she's at an age, at a very difficult age. But we suspect that she has some form of autism. And we don't know truly because we're not professionals in that regard. So we requested to the Department of Special Ed. But they've said that she doesn't need it because she's progressing, which is not true. Therefore, we would love to highlight this, that she she's not progressing the way we wished. Sorry. When you told her that. So we were suspecting that there was a form of autism. And we are requesting evaluations so that, on top of that, she may, she may have, she, I think she has dyslexia. And because she can't recognize symbols. And and twice, we've requested this support. It is as though it's her right. This is what I feel. This is her right, the opportunity for her to, we don't want her to lose the year, the entire year. She's not attending currently. And so that will be truly the most important point I'm trying to make here. To, please, if you could soon support us to receive those evaluations, that will be it, what we are requesting, because we are extremely concerned as parents. Okay. So we are on changes to the agenda. We need to pull item 11.2 due to a family emergency. That will come back to us at a later meeting. Any other changes? The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card online or at the entrance. And you can hand it to Evelyn. Okay, so with that, we are on changes to the agenda. We need to pull item 11.2 due to a family emergency. That will come back to us at a later meeting. Any other changes? Okay, so with that, we are on changes to the agenda. We need to pull item 11.2 due to a family emergency. That will come back to us at a later meeting. And so we've tried to sort this through an IEP meeting to see if my girl, we suspect that somehow she is a special ed kid, but she's not progressing. One, we requested a 101 that was declined. And we are concerned about her education and her progress. And we've been wanting to get more therapy and more support for her, but nothing's happening. We know that she's improving and her grades, little by little, are improving. She's growing. But in her, through her reports, they're very low from Kennedy. Her grades are very low and they're getting lower and lower. And so the reason why, she has had a lot of absences too. And I know that's one of the reasons why she's very low, but we're requesting the right support, the right help. What we've done twice, we requested twice as a parent, was to make this very clear, that she's a 13-year-old girl. And she's at an age, at a very difficult age. But we suspect that she has some form of autism. And we don't know truly because we're not professionals in that regard. So we requested to the Department of Special Ed. But they've said that she doesn't need it because she's progressing, which is not true. Therefore, we would love to highlight this, that she she's not progressing the way we wished. Sorry. When you told her that. So we were suspecting that there was a form of autism. And we are requesting evaluations so that, on top of that, she may, she may has, she, I think she has dyslexia. And because she can't recognize symbols. And and twice, we've requested this support. It is as though it's her right. This is what I feel. This is her right, the opportunity for her to, we don't want her to lose the year, the entire year. She's not attending currently. And so that will be truly the most important point I'm trying to make here. To, please, if you could soon support us to receive those evaluations, that will be it, what we are requesting, because we are extremely concerned as parents.
In this moment, señor, estamos escuchando. No podemos darle respuesta durante esta cita, pero lo que puedo hacer yo es, tenemos aquí tenemos su, su nombre y también su dirección, pero, y su número de teléfono. Y entonces, lo que vamos a hacer, Evelyn, que trabaja conmigo, va a hacer una cita conmigo. Porque también necesitas el nombre de su hija. Okay? So you, what Gonzalo was doing, you know, he hadn't recorded, the news was recording.
Do you want me to translate what you said?
Do you want to just let us?
What I said is that during this time, we can't have a conversation. I can't have any responses. But what I will do is have Evelyn give him a call so that I can meet with him. And then also, I need to get the name of his daughter, because her last name is Chang.
Thank you. And final speaker, we have Maria Stockton. And if you can, yeah, turn the microphone on. Thank you.
Oh, hi there. Good evening, President Lawson and trustees. My name is Maria Stockton. You may have received an email or two, and I'm putting the face with the email so you know who speaks to you when I send you emails. I am a Redwood City School District employee for, I think, John, what, on my 40, 50 year? Here, I am a member of California School Employees Association, Redwood City 5, the union for the classified. I am also a product of the Redwood City School District since kindergarten. So I have stayed here all my life. It isn't that I don't have a life. It's just I've enjoyed my life here in the Redwood City area and working with the school district girls that would have left a long time ago. It's not the money, that's for sure. It's the love of the job and the kids. So I want to name some people. Margaret Marshall, Pat Brown, Ed Riley, Dennis McBride, Alicia McAvoy. These are board members and many others that truly showed all our members, they were board members interested in knowing what was happening in the school district. They went out, they visited the school sites, they talked to administrators, teachers, but they also took their time to talk to the classified employees. From the kitchen to the custodian, from the office staff to the librarians and everybody in between, they actually went and talked and said, how do you see us improving our district? What are your concerns? What do you need? And they really turned around and worked as a partnership with everybody in the school district. These are, these are board members that shown that their education and their positions of the school board members and trustees by visiting their sites and talking with that, with us all. They were asked, let's see, they asked the real questions and talked to the students. I bring this up because I actually was going to come and talk on one thing, but then Margaret Marshall happens to be a volunteer at my school. And she tutors students. And so today was just a delight and I thought, oh, okay, I'm going to change. So one thing somebody mentioned today is about libraries and librarians and other people. I want you board members to really consider the decisions that you make, not by just what you're told, but go out and ask questions and find out what's really happening. You may have children that have gone through the Redwood City School District. Have you ever had one come home and say, I really hated the library. I dislike this. Years ago, Wendy Kelly, 2015, was part of the committee that increased the hours of the librarians through a $100,000 grant, I think it was, from LCAP, which was board members, teachers, principals, administrators, parents, classified, community members, and students input. They all felt it was important enough to put money into libraries and provide services and increase services, not just to come in, but for the librarians to go out and do their different things at their schools. Not every library is the same. It depends on their environment and their need of the students. It's really important that you go out and meet these people and talk to them, as well as the office staff and everybody. We'd like to be equal with everybody and provide good and great service to this district. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker card. So that brings us to bond consent items. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, and now we have Will here for 10.1. He's too solar.
Yeah, are there any questions, Ms. Siders?
Will, what is the timeline on this?
This project has to be completed by April of 2026, and we will get it completed before then. That's to maintain the PG&E grandfathering, the more financially advantageous rate that we got you guys grandfathered in on.
Okay.
And just a reminder, estimated project cost is around 14 million for hard cost. And the 25-year savings to the general fund was around like 22 or 23 million, so.
And what, what is it? It's going to be solar, like above parking lots? Is that kind of what it's looking at, or solar on roofs? Like, how's it, do you, do you know yet? I don't know how far it is.
We, we had some conceptual plans from a couple of years back that we're going to need to circle back on. But it would probably be a combination of all, some, some parking lot carport systems, some shade structures on, you know, asphalt and fields, potentially some roof mounted. So yeah, like phase one was a combination of all, including the roof mounted on top of this building. So that'll be the first thing that we do is dig in on that a little bit more and make sure that it's coordinated with any updates to the facilities master plan.
I was at a school campus in Concord over the weekend, and they had solar shade structure just on their, their blacktop for where the students like hang out and stuff. Can't remember if we have that, like at Adelante Selby, or is that just?
We do. We do at Selby. And initially, it was kind of questioned by the sites and the stakeholders. And once we installed it there, I understand that it was really well taken, that the staff and the students really appreciate that shade. And so we've definitely looked at, we will definitely look at maximizing, you know, where we can create more shade structures, you know, on the edges of asphalt and fields are great locations. Asphalt fields, anywhere that we can, we'll maximize that.
This is an action item. You guys are having to work hard today. I need some.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Will. Nice to see you. All right, so us, 11.1 Citizens Measure You Oversight Committee, we did not have.
Yeah, Megan O'Reilly Green is online.
Got it.
She is online. Okay, perfect.
So if we can, well, because Evelyn's doing that, yeah. Hi, Megan.
Hi, this is, this is Megan. Can you hear me?
She's unmuted.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Megan, are you?
Can you guys hear me? I can hear her. Can you hear me? I, yeah, I can hear you. Okay, I can hear Megan. Can you guys hear me?
Um, oh, her microphone is gone. We can't hear.
So I can only hear Alyssa, I think. Is that, is that you, Alyssa?
So Megan, we're having an audio issue, it looks like, because we can see that your microphone was going up and down.
Yeah, it's funny. I can hear you clearly and you can hear me. I'll just send them a chat real quick. I'm on Zoom, so.
I'm wondering if maybe you can.
You could turn the laptop up so we can hear it. Oh, I don't know. Yeah, so it's the room.
Oh.
The room, there's something in the room that's not working.
That's the, it's probably recording, so we could turn the laptop volume up just so you can hear.
Okay, let me see. All right.
Okay.
Go ahead. All right.
Is it working now, or?
Yeah, go right ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, so hi, this is Megan. I'm on the Measure You Parcel Tax Committee. And we met recently to approve all of the expenditures that were, that were allocated for each school. And I was wondering if the, the board had any questions for me.
This is where the sound is going to start beating back when you try to do this.
Yeah.
Is the talk loud?
Yeah.
So any questions from anyone?
Yes, if Alyssa or David had questions.
They really can't participate.
Then we have no question. Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much. I guess we don't, we don't need to vote on this, right?
No, no. Are there any questions from any other board members or comments?
Yeah, I mean, I can make some comments, but I don't have any questions for Megan. Do you want to just have me yell it into the?
Sure.
Just that, I just wanted to thank the committee members. They really do a diligent job of going through the Measure You reports and looking at everything there. And, you know, I think it's a real privilege to live in a community that entrusts the school district with this local funding from a parcel tax. And, you know, I know I take the responsibility. I'm sure my fellow board members take a responsibility of ensuring that the money is spent as the voters intended. And so I really value and appreciate what this Oversight Committee does and that, again, the diligence that they go flying on it from school is really meeting the goals there. I was wondering, I think I did it last week, but our new chair for this committee was elected, Stephanie Gibson, and I want to congratulate the outgoing chair, Janet Borgin. I was wondering, I think I did it last week, but our new chair for this committee was elected Stephanie Gibson and I wanted to congratulate the outgoing chair Janet Borgins again.
Right.
Um, who termed out, um, you know, there were important things that the voters authorized to improve local elementary and middle school education for all public school students in Redwood City. Um, enhance math, science, reading and writing skills in local classrooms, attract and retain qualified staff to enhance quality arts and music programs and to update classroom computers and instructional technology and supporting school libraries. And and so I appreciate the committee for what they do to ensure that, you know, everything's being spent the way it was meant to be.
Yep. Get up for everything. Thank you, Megan, for being on the on the meeting that's in the me, I should say on the meeting that today and sorry for the technical difficulties we're having.
Oh, yeah, no worries. I don't know if you can still hear me or if it's feeding back.
Yeah, through my through my computer. Yeah, we can hear.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, I just wanted to second what Mike said. Um, you know, being on school site councils for many years, it was it was such a, it's been such a pleasure being on this committee to see how, um, you know, how all of the other schools are allocating this money um, to in order to, you know, plug the gaps in education and it was really such a joy to to get it all approved. And I I'm I'm happy to participate on the committee and I just hope that more parcel taxes in the future to be allocated, more committees of this sort. That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate. All right.
Hit it again. Okay, we are on consent items. Is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve our consent items.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye, thank you. We have no action items. Oh, sorry, I skipped over. We we had to pull eleven point two. So for those of you who missed it, um, we will bring that back to another meeting. Um, Board and Superintendent Reports would like to start.
Um, I only have one thing to report. I attended the ELEF meeting last week at Roosevelt. Catherine went over attendance and so we actually did have parents from Garfield, Orion and Kennedy representing that evening. So that's all I have to report.
I attended the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and then Pelt Construction Service did a presentation there, which I think was nice. Hopefully they'll come back and present to the board when there's a little more information. I think otherwise you can just watch the video from the oversight one. Um, and I thought the members had some good questions about community input, about future major construction projects, you know, how the how asking how the community be involved, um, you know, how their input will be reflected back to them after they put it in and you know, and if engagement is going to include beyond the school, I thought I thought there is some good points there. Also went to the SMC SBA dinner presentation they had with Dr. Baker and Ms. Sarara. We saw MTSS for literacy, dyslexia experience, the science of reading and preparing for universal screening. Um, so it was a little bit of the dyslexia experience that we all did at the library a few months back. Um, but it was really interesting to hear how other school districts are approaching literacy and what they've done. Um, you know, and and some of the things that they can learn from. And I I know, John, you probably talked to, you've probably talked to the superintendents all the time and and learned from them. So um, it was my first time hearing from some of them about their programs. That was neat.
Um, let's see, I also attended the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee meeting. Um, and Dr. Baker and I were at the two by two by two committee, which is with the city council and the high school district and just receives updates. Uh, what's going on in their areas of work. And then I attended the induction committee, the biannual meeting. Um, Nicole Crawford just went through the induction process, um, what the um, the new teachers go through to clear their credential. Um, and then I think everybody got an invitation to the colloquium for the induction program, May fourteenth at Henry Ford. If you can make it, it's always really nice. It's a great event.
The only item that I have that's not different is I attended TAF STEAM, STEAM and STEM fair that they had on Wednesday. It was from five to six. It was really good. I didn't get to meet, go to the one they had at Selby, Adalanta Selby the next night because I had a different meeting to go to, but it was great. It was very well attended. David was there. A lot of his parents were there. They're people from Stanford, so it was a really good event for families and kids. And it was a lot of fun to see the kids playing with the different types of apparatuses that were brought in. So it's good.
Very nice. Okay. Um, information on San Mateo County Investment Fund. Any questions on that? Correspondence. I think we received an email from the speaker that we had tonight regarding North Star, um, media request regarding Henry Ford School. And I think that went to everybody. Um, okay. Um, I think that's it.
Yep.
Okay. Um, possible other business suggested items for the future?
We do have the construct. We do have the construction coming, I believe, at our next board meeting.
Ben Paul said, okay.
Yeah, um, along, we will definitely try to see where we will put the I ready piece with the information. Moving forward and we're all set for our May tenth offsite, which is the retreat. Everyone agreed. Where to go along. Everyone agreed it's May tenth and right now we're looking for a location.
Uh, changes to board meeting calendar. Lightning round meeting. So it's a, what are we at seven forty one? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Some favor. All right. All right. Thank you for being here and thank you to the audience members too. There are a number of people in the audience. Have a good night.